So my name is Helene Joseph. I am the chapter lead for the United Nations Association of San Diego, their Young Professionals section. Our mission of the UN is to promote engagement with the United Nations. And our chapter here in San Diego has been doing that since 1946, when it first started. And we believe strongly that the world needs the UN and that the UN needs you. And you extend to everyone in the community, any and everyone who is willing to make a change in the world and work for that change. So that's why we're here, yeah? And so if you would go ahead and introduce yourself first, please.
My name is Irina Yarmolenko. I am 27 years old. I am from Ukraine, from Zhtomere. It's 130 kilometers from Kiev. Our population of our city is around 270,000 people. And I was elected four years ago as a member of city council. And I am the head of NGO Center for Social Communication. And in my professional sphere, I am event manager.
Okay.
And my working fields are gender issues, equal opportunities, and eco-friendly projects.
Awesome. Okay, so Mary said that she had met you when you came to San Diego the last time for the Diplomacy Council in 2014. So tell us a little bit about that. What brought you out here? Or what was your purpose for coming out here for the event? And then how things have changed in your career since then?
Yeah, at that period, I was a journalist investigator. And I wrote articles. And it was mostly about corruption, about... I wrote even interviews, but mostly it was a different story with analysis. And I was invited like for experience, exchange experience. And since the time has been changing a lot because I was after Revolution of Dignity. And maybe you know, in 2014, the Revolution of Dignity started. And young people, students, came to the main square in the Kiev and protest because our ex-president Yanukovych didn't sign the association to European Union, the declaration of the association. And I was one of the first who came to the square. And after 30 days of peaceful protests, security of our authority hit our students and our youth. And after this, 1 million people came to the square and it started to be more violence protest because during the one month, 100 people were killed in my peaceful, independent country. Can you imagine? Like in the center of the capital, were killed around 100 people.
Just simply protesting.
I couldn't believe about this. And it was like a few years ago, four, five years ago. And I was an active participant of that revolution. And after some time, our president left the country to Russia. And the new election started. So we choose new president, new parliament. And then we started to choose new local authority. And I decided that I don't want anymore write other thoughts, other stories. I would like to present my ideas about how society should work with youth leaders, how society should work with young women.
Young people, yeah.
And at that moment, I took part in election. And I was elected. So I went to every like apartment, had a lot of meetings, and said that I'm living here. And I would be the happy if you choose me because it will be, I will work. I would work in this territory because I care about this. I live and I want to change it. So after some years, I really changed a lot in my district. It is about infrastructure. It is about lights. It is about transportation causes. It was like this. And so I couldn't be, continue to be a journalist.
You had to take action.
Yeah, and I was like a blogger. And I started to be blogger and work hardly as a member of city council. My main issues in, as I told you, working field: eco, eco-friendly projects, and gender issues, equal opportunities, and issues about diversity and inclusion.
Okay. So let's start off with the female rights and women empowerment type of work that you do. What are some of the events that you guys put on? Or what are some of the initiatives that you guys are taking in the city council to empower women economically in your area?
Actually, I would like to add something to your first question because I like, you asked it, why I'm in San Diego now?
Right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I didn't answer. I'm so sorry.
That's true, I did, okay.
Because I started to talk about revolution.
Yeah, it gets heated when she starts talking about revolution.
So I was, at that time, I was like a journalist. And during this four years, Mary, she saw how hardly I work. And I think she thought that it can be interesting for me once more back to San Diego and communicate with people like you, with experts, and share my ideas. One of this idea Gender Month, which I would like to share all of United States. It's my dream will be. But I will dream because dream is okay. And actually, I was invited by IRAI to Global Summit. It was a few days ago in Washington. And there were more than 49 young leaders from different countries, from every country, just one person. And I was like a representative of Ukraine for different sorts. And mostly, we talked about how encourage young people to this kind of stuff. I mean, to social activity, to political activity, and so on. IRAI, it's International Republic Institute, actually.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And what is your question was about like project use? Maybe you can repeat.
Right, so now that you're part of the city council, and then you said most of your work is being an event manager. What sort of...
Professional, yeah. Because we work like as a volunteer in our city council. So it's, yeah, we spent a lot of time for this. But then we should be like a professional in our spheres, like for a job, for our, for, for prosperity, and so on.
Okay. So your professional job, aside from being part of the city council, you're in events?
I can say so because it's difficult like to divide yourself.
Very true, I understand that, yes.
You're always in one city, in one problems, in one situation. And yes, I just have leaflets about, this is like about our Gender Month.
Okay.
Leafletts, it's like our brand, our partners, the name. And here we have like partners who start, who work with them during the Gender Month. We have like media, NGOs, association, and so on. And some thoughts about, and we wrote our next challenges and what we analyze about during that month. And here, you can see that like we marched, how many, during one month, how many...
So the progress.
How many participants took part in this event? How many hours we spent to analyze information? And how many new agents we get? An ambassador of equal opportunities? And actually, I should admit that it was totally very creative and unusual event because it was during 30 days. And during this time, we had lectures, and meeting with pupils, I mean, lessons for them about equal opportunities with students. We talk about, we talk together with businesswoman, with young businesswoman. We talked with a policewoman. We talked with army woman, I mean, military sphere. And we encouraged a lot of other spheres. And it was very unusual because at the end, we had a final discussion panel. There, we present what think about equal opportunities and equal rights pupils. And it was totally unexpected. And we present how military and policewomen who like more, have more force. Yeah, had like, we watch movie in outside, in inside, about equal opportunities about, because as you know, in our country, maybe you know, in our country war, because after that Revolution of Dignity, Russia don't want pro-European government and then exit Crimea four years ago and started support separatist financialist, I should support.
Yes.
It means that every time, for example, I live 800 kilometers from eastern part where the war. But I couldn't say that at all everything in my city because soldiers back at home and they have like mental problems. Refugees came to my city. And another issues. So it was, we encouraged different social groups during this month. And we encourage military staff, as I told you, and...
So they need to build the forces, basically. So trying to encourage the young people to consider those for career paths?
Yeah.
Okay.
And to understand that we are, all of us different, but we are all equal.
Right, and you live there and you probably care about your country. So try to protect it. So I did notice the issue where Russia was trying to take over Crimeanian peninsula. What is so specific, what is it that they want in that area?
I think that problem that during our revolution, we can be, after revolution, we can be like an example for Russia. People who live that it's easy to change authority if you don't like it. It's easy to fight for pro-European and pro-American values. And they don't want any NATO cross, near the border. So they don't want any democracy process. They don't want rule of law. They used to live with, as you know, some old and bad... I mean, without freedom of speech.
Okay, but I, so I think I'm still not understanding from you why you think the Russians find that area so valuable? So why is it that they want to take it away from the Ukraine?
Because there live people who can show example how to protect their law, how to protect their rights, how to be, how to live with new values, democracy values. And if NATO came, come, it means that American military would be very close to border to Russia. Russia don't want it.
I see, okay, that makes complete sense, all right.
It's actually, it's more about geopolitics, not like about local level. And for me, like a young leader, I just can say that...
You know, the positioning is very strategic.
Yeah, and I was in Russia and I talk with my relatives because most of them live there. And I see that they used to live without, with, with that propaganda. We saw that we are like, shouldn't be so like, how to say? Not, not to live with pro-European and pro-American values. I mean, about freedom of speech. I mean about, I mean about democracy, yeah.
Okay, understood. So that definitely should not be happening in today's day and age. But clearly, things like that still happen around the world. And then, so like I said, getting away from that part. So that region is very specific for positioning. But you guys have a very strong economy. So I think it's good that, just a while ago, we were talking about the events that you guys promote to introduce the young ladies into careers that they can move into. So you guys have a lot of like lumber milling, food processing, granite, metalworking. And then I saw some of the enterprising. Metal fabrication is huge. And you guys have a huge pharma industry as well, pharmaceuticals? Say it again?
Yeah, yeah, I'm here.
Okay, ignore it.
I just want to say that now it's very difficult to speak about economical situation in Ukraine because we had, we really have, we really have a war, a war. And before revolution, the one dollars is, was eight hryvnia. Now, one dollar 25 hryvnia. And other one, how do you think? Which owner of company would be ready come and open new businesses in a, in country with war?
Got it.
And other issue, yes, we have problems with corruption, with not free courts. And it means that you can come, spend money for your business, and then somebody can grab your business or like, stop it.
Just completely overtake it.
Yeah, and, yeah, I mean, we became better. We fight with corruption. We, we support our reforms in courts, in the health system, and so on. But still, we are in process. And it's very, and I will be, will be very happy to be in a part of this process and push these processes. That's why I started from local area and work in local projects because I can feel what kind of problems here people and like gathering that maybe after some years run to office.
Okay, so I'm hearing a lot of what you're saying. The country is at war right now. A lot of people are protesting. People are dying. The value of your money is decreasing. Different companies are not willing to invest in the country. So essentially...
But not so much.
Not as much because of the tension between or in the region right now.
Yeah.
So then, I guess my question to you is, you're running for office. How will you change it? What are you going to change?
Actually, I mean, after a few years, I hope I will do it. I mean, I'm not going now or after one year because this election, we, we still are in process. We have parliament, our election to parliament. And I'm not take a part in this election. I'm not take part.
Yeah, so you're, okay, understood. You're not there as yet, but you're working towards it with the positions that you're taking on now, with the events that you're attending, the people that you're meeting to discuss the, you know, the state of your country and the way that you guys are trying to make a change. So you must have some sort of vision of what you would like to do when you get there, right? So what do you think that is going to be?
Yeah, I would, I would say, after a few seconds, I just want to admit that now I'm working in this area about equal rights, as I, as I saw it, and in the area of eco-friendly projects.
Right, so we were trying to...
Leafletts one more. I will explain a little bit later. I just want to admit that now I am in a process gathering information. It's very important to run when you analyze what happened, what goes on in your country. And then suggest your program. Because very often in our country, we have, we have around 300 parties, political parties. And no one have ideology, just leaders party, and so on. And it's very, and our people not used to analyze political candidate. They don't analyze political ideas and so on. I want to be other one. But the main idea now, it's not about my running to office. My main idea is encourage more young people, young girl and man to take part in social and political life. It's like my main idea. So I don't think, I don't think about office. I think that we should change some kind of rules in local level because we should know and analyze political issues. We should gathering together. We should be like more, we, I even can say that we can be like a youth leaders, we can say that we want to more quarters for youth that, and so on. That's why, first of all, I need to encourage people to take part in this and to create my team with whom I will, I will go to this, to office. Because now, I'm working in gender issues, equal rights, and about eco-friendly project. And for me, equal opportunities, it's more, it's not about like men and women. It's not about like feminists or like about masculinity. It's more about gender-oriented budgeting, that we should count how many people live in different area, what they need exactly, this girl, this man, this woman, women, this children. We should know what kind of social groups lives here, what kind of mental habits they have. Many peoples with disabilities, and so on, and so on. And I try to promote like this, that it's very important issue to, to create our budgets in national level and in local level with gender-oriented budgeting. And it's important for me. So because after this, we will see how efficiently spent money because we understand that this kind of infrastructure needs for this group, social groups. They don't need par park without good infrastructure. They need park with comfortable to every, for example, two children, to mom, to mom and dad's with strollers, and so on. We need transportation system with rank and pandas, do you know? Do you know like...
Ramps?
Ramps, yeah.
Yeah, for elderly.
Because very often, we have no. We need, we, and we have even, mostly our buildings, they are from Soviet Union time. And they have no possibilities how people with disabilities can like have ramp. It's awful. People with disabilities couldn't come, couldn't take a job because they just, they can be very clever, but they even couldn't get opportunities, leave home and get new, and get car, or bus, or trolley bus with a ramp. And then, when they would come, they couldn't jump to this, to the, run to that floor because they have no lift.
Okay.
And I could, it's in a, in a very sphere. It's this problem in every examples. So like, this my idea with, I think, gender-oriented budgeting, very important process.
Okay, that's like a different sort of point of view because most times when you think of gender equality, it's more so fighting for mostly matched economic value between men and women. So women get paid less than men, you know, and we're trying to fight...
30% in our country, yes.
Yeah.
30% less. In your country, I know that it's 18.
Okay, so it's a bit more over on your end. I was going to ask it, what is the difference? And how do you see that play out? But, okay. And then as far as like your eco-friendly ideas, tell us a little bit more about that in the plastics. This afternoon, I was reading a book. It's called What If? And it's just like random science types of questions. And one of the things that came up was this guy asked the author, what is the world, or what is Manhattan going to look like in the next billion years from now? And plastics came up. He was like, okay, well, at that point in time, all of the plastic that we've ever generated is still going to be there. It's probably going to make like, you know, layers across the world. The ocean is going to be dried out. The sun is going to interact with the plastic. All of the fumes from the plastic are going to enter into the atmosphere. And the cycle just, it's like a ripple effect, and it's devastating, right? So what are your thoughts on the plastics industry? I guess, because that's one of your focuses. And what are the things that you try to champion for change in that area?
Yeah, first of all...
And so some of these things, if you have them on PDF, you'd have to email them to me so that we can share them, yeah?
I will. First of all, I was, I think, in my city exactly, I was initiator of project of decision that we should less using plastic in markets and in shopping centers. And our deputy, I mean, our member city council vote for this project of decision. And it's me that we, we done in our city first step. We said that we are, we declare that we want less plastic in our area. But it's not enough. We have no rule, we have no law in national law. In our country, without national law, any decision of local level is zero because they can go to court and cancel it everything, and we will look like not very serious. So we, we just recommended less use plastic. But second step, we created the idea about eco-bags. It's like our logo of our city. And here I wrote, if you want to save plastic, if you want to save planet, you should use less plastic. Yeah, and here is, we spread out information in, in a lot of shoppings in Zhtomere, like five rules about how you can live without plastic. Use eco-bags, use different good boxes for food.
And paper bags and things like that.
Yes, and if you throw out the brush, you should think how you do it. And of course, use eco-bags. And I think it's very important to your country too because I know that eco, I know that plastic bags cost around 10 cents in your, in your country.
I know, but it's like, it doesn't take away from the problem, right? They're saying like, okay, you can't take the bags, but you're still going to buy them.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm saying it, I don't see how it's making a change. So sometimes, or maybe small change, I shouldn't say that there isn't any change, just the fact that a law was passed and now, you know, people have to have the thought at the checkout, hey, do you need a plastic bag? Or maybe I should take my own bag? That's a huge step, yes? But for someone like myself, sometimes I still forget my bags. I'm like, okay, great, I forgot my bag. Let me pay the 10 cents for a plastic bag. So I'm still contributing to the effects because I'm still using plastic.
But, but if it would, if it will be cost, if it costs one dollar, two dollars, three dollars, I should, I think... I su- I think you wouldn't forget.
Right, it's punished penalty kind of.
One is about mental habits.
Yeah.
And we should promote the idea. So like, our idea about this is promote that, first of all, it's about your planet. You are living here and your, your children will live here, you should remember you are not alone here. And second one, yeah, I think that it would be like a fees for, for uh, for example. For using plastic or for throw out rubbish not in space, special places. Or don't cleaning up after your, your pets and so on. Because now we have no fee, as I told you, we have no law, national law, law. And I would like to ask, when I back from your, your USA, ask more loudly. Our member, new, new elected member city of, of national parliament, it will be twenty-one of July. So come on, guys, when you will do it, when you will vote? And it's, it's not enough from them, it's not enough from us, but we are in local level, started to fight with this.
Okay.
I am started exactly with my team to do it. Because it's not like uh uh cities project, it's just mine project with my team.
Okay, and do you have uh any sense of what uh the country does with all of the trash? So um there are some places that use their landfills uh to generate energy and things like that. Does the government have any thoughts or are there any actions in place already? That try to use the waste that is generated to do something useful? Or try to put it back into something else, like use the energy to put it somewhere else?
Even we are in our city, try to encourage investors to build a special factory where we can uh like. Yeah, forget the word.
No, that's fine.
I mean, the word with, when we can re- re- repurpose.
Okay.
Uh and uh so we are trying to encourage investors. And yes, we are talking not very loud, not much about renewable energy. About, but it's not enough, I think. But actually, about renewable energy, it's really more for national level. I'm just now in a local. But yes, we would ask because it's very combined to our topic about eco-friendly projects. Actually, our city signed a lot of declaration about that uh we are going to be more friendly, eco-friendly. But it's just the first steps.
Okay, so what are the things that you're working on?
Hmm, what you mean?
Um just with, within the scope of um the gender equality and eco-friendly projects. Um are those mostly the two campaigns that you're putting most of your energy into right now?
Um there are, so we will continue to do because it's not for one day, not.
Yeah, understandable, it's a lot of work.
And of course, it's the issues would be like this and they wouldn't change. That it will be gender issues, equal rights, diversity and eco-friendly projects. I, I, I hope, I would.
When you talk about diversity, can you clarify?
I mean that we have an idea in September, we will, we will have an event. And we called it Chi Week, Chi Week. For example, I mean, next, next event, our, my team, which will do, it's about Chi Week. And uh it will be looks like, very looks like gender month, but just for women. And about diversity, actually, we live in a free country. And it's mean that we are all different, but we should respect each other and communicate. And be equal, so it's mean about, even for example, very interesting example about LGBT. Um I, uh when I was initiator, my project of decision. That we should vote to charter by TMR. Council of European Region and Municipalities. The name of charter, um charter for equal rights in the local level. And we had in this charter, a charter, a few words like gender, gender, gender-oriented budgeting. Can you imagine the head of regional church? Write a letter to our authority, to our mayor and roll and, and suggest, and suggested cancel this charter. Because they had, in this charter, we have the problem word gender, we should cancel word gender. And I said that I would like to met with him, to meet with him, and we met. And I said, what a problem. And he's, yeah, I, I said, gender, what is gender for you? It's about LGBT, he said. I said, for me, gender, it's about different social roles. Today with you, I'm like a partner and co- colleagues maybe for you or, I don't know. Back at home, I can be mom, I can be sister, I can be daughter, this is my social roles and every time they are changes during the day. So what's a problem, what do you want? And he said, okay, but for me, gender means that we promote the idea about homosexual and lesbians. I don't know why he said, why he thinks, he thought so. Because I think that we always have some percentage about people. Who are homosexual or lesbian. Like every, every century, we had the same percentage, around ten or maybe less percent. Maybe it's mean that we couldn't know that it's not happening in our country. We, we, we maybe don't should pro- promote this, but we couldn't be violence country. If in our constitution, we said that everybody, everyone is equal.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask if there were any like cases where um people of the LGBT community felt harassed. Because of, you know, like their uh sexual orientation. Um and if that plays any role in, maybe in your workforce, do they get discriminated because of that? When they go to apply for jobs or things like that, is that what his point of view is?
I mean, our my city is not ready to speak loudly about this topic. We are not talking about this and never, never, nobody speaks about it. And I think it's, and I think it's not even correct uh to speak about with whom you are sleep today. Because we should speak about political ideas and social ideas, but not about.
Not your personal life. Yeah, that's not your personal life.
Yeah, it's not your business, sorry, guys.
No, it's fair.
Yeah, but we had pride, we had pride a few weeks ago.
Okay.
And this year, it was without violence.
That's great.
Had opposition meeting between them, but without violence, without blood, it's good. And I think we step by step do some stuff. But I was in that global summit in Washington. And I asked my colleagues from Kyrgyzstan, from Mongolia, from Kyrgyzstan, Tajikistan. And they said, no, no meetings with LGBT, no prize, no, it's not possible.
Okay.
So I mean that we are like, because we prom- we are, with, I said that I am pro-European. I am pro-American role with these values and I support equal opportunities, equal rights. And we couldn't be violence for each other, we should find compromises. We should talk a lot and actually, gender month, it's about communication with each other. It's about learning new things, new values, because we should promote it, we should, we should communicate.
Yeah, that's how you solve uh most issues is through open communication, so I think that's a really good approach, yeah?
Yeah, and actually, we can do a lot, we can, we can repair roof, we can repair floor. We can buy, buy new trolley buses or trains. But if we are here not ready for changes.
Then it won't happen.
Yeah, nothing would happen. We should, it's two important way, budgeting.
So just on that note, um the communicating the thoughts. So how do you guys get the message out to the community? Um so you do your events, but what other, like do you use social media? Or is it very grassroots, are you going door to door like, hey, we're having this event, this is what's happening, here's a flyer, come to the event? Like what, what's the tactic?
Ja- uh yeah, uh yeah, it, it should be like this. And I would like, I would like, I, I would like to do this like this. But it was so quickly, it was like, like first time and we have no time to do like this. But I see that it should be like this. But we, we, we couldn't open every door, I mean, just for information. I mean, the target was not so big.
Okay.
But it, uh as usual, how I do it, I just write, release what I want, what the goal, what the mission.
Yeah.
What, what the group of participants and what the idea. And then, and then I started to plan events. Then I started to create leaflets, design different type of.
Actually, I can't hear you anymore. I can't hear you anymore. Hello?
Yeah, do you hear me now?
Okay, yeah, now I can hear you.
Uh-huh.
So you're saying you designed leaflets, that's, that's a lot.
Yeah, and then I spread out it. And actually, I am as a journalist, my first education, I write a lot of, a lot of, a lot of different kind of. Um information and I had a context of journalist. And I tried to call to every journalist, to head of NGOs, to I, I went, I, I go to our mayor, I go to deputies. I comment, communicate with different departments, I should spread out, spread out. I, I am going to Department of Education because I think we should spend a lot of time and a lot of money. For exactly, for education. For edu- and there should be like special courses about this topic, two topics. And so I, I, my first like, when I, where I knocked the door at just Department of Education. And I said, okay, what kind of, which, which school we target this time? With uni- which university we target this time?
Okay, I think that's good.
But I hope the next event will be more public uh and will be more covered with media, more and more. And I hope more, more people just started to think about this. It would be enough, very important that people after events started to think about this. This is the idea, get questions or even for brain.
Right, I think that's good, once you start planting the seeds of thoughts, eventually, change will happen, so. Understood, okay. Um so just checking in with um Suzanne, you're on the line, I'm not sure if you had any questions?
Let's ask you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still on the line, um.
Hello?
I'm just wondering with the global summit, was there any discussion about the Sustainable Development Goals? Of UN?
Uh dur- during the global summit or in my work?
Well, both.
Um first of all, yeah, we have uh uh our strategy of our city. Uh we called it two O thirty, like the goal, where are we moving forward? And there we have a lot of like thesis, what's important for us and what the idea of our city. And how we can encourage different groups to be an active. How we encourage young people not leave our city and move to Kiev, because Kiev very close to us. We think about how we can create infrastructure to make it more inclusive. Uh we, we had strategy when, we had special department. And we uh, we tried to work with this issue. And we, we were, we, we were one of the city where international experts came. And eh eh we had a lot of different groups and session where we work in this session. And analyze information, test information, then we had interview with different kind of people. And if, let's, let's back to global summit. The focus of global summit was, as I told, as I, as I said, youth in, youth leader. Or how to encourage young leaders to take part in uh social. And political life. And actually, we work in the groups, like we, because uh from different continent, people came. And we had like a five groups, every continent, we're representatives. And we found the same problems, which ha- which have every, which has every continent. And what we would do with this issues, how we can improve situation. And I think it was really cool job. And uh, and I know that you can check like youthleader.com. It is international website where a lot of different, where people from, youth. From different countries registered and spread their ideas, problems, thoughts. And so on. And actually, during this event, we said that a few points. First of all, we should promote that yes, youth people, um women and other different social group. Should, shouldn't think that we have barrier and politic is closed. Yeah, politic is closed for uh mostly because of different situation, but we should start to speak about it loudly. Then we said that we should work very efficiently with political parties. Because we can be elected just with a party. And party should have like a strong value to support youth, to give them quotas, to ask what they want, what their problem. Because they, very often in different continents, they do like for like, just, just write that we done it. Somewhere in the paper. And we talk about that youth should be more active, they should ask questions, they should be more educated. Because very often, if nobody say about how to be active and how to be leader in the school, in university. Give bad education, you don't read, for example, you don't know languages and read just your, in your native media. Information, it's mean that you are not open and they would try educate you like what you should think. For this very often corrupted government. Yeah, like this.
Okay, thank you for your answer.
Thank you for question, maybe you have other one?
Um for now, I'm good, but thank you.
Okay.
Right, so just a time check, so we are at seven twenty-seven and we probably still want to wrap up just before eight. Um and because we are recording this session and we will share it with the rest of the Young Professional Network. Um I think I would like uh to ask you, maybe to just give some advice uh to anyone who would probably want to go into politics. Even if they're not from your country, you could speak to someone from your country as well. Because you never know, there may be someone in the young professionals that connects with your background. Um let us know a little bit about how you got started, where you are right now, and I know we've been discussing it. Um and you know, specific steps that you think you've taken to get you where you are and where you see yourself in the future.
It depends on person, what person waiting for. I always try to find justice during all of my life. I, I tried to find justice, even in childhood, even in my university. And if you feel, guys, that something goes wrong around you, if you feel that you don't like this politic, politicians, if you think that you tired about your not repairing roof, floors, doors, doesn't matter. If you tired and you have your ideas, you shouldn't wait. You should just say, okay, after this, after a few seconds, I will take a pen and I will take a paper and will write what I gonna do, how I will, gonna do it and what kind of changes it will bring. When, when you have plan, it's more easy to move.
And that is a fact.
You should exactly write what is your mission for next, your goals, your steps to the next one day, to the next week, to the next month, to the next year, to the next five years and ten years. You should have, you should, you should have like a vision, how you would get, would, how you would get this goal. But very important, don't be closed like this. Very important, if you found some new ideas, change your thoughts, analyze more. Because when you just have informations, okay, I can be candidate, it's okay. But then you can started to read, if you can be candidate to local elections and you can be to the parliament, to European Parliament, you can be head of young leaders around the, all over the world, just to be open for new experience. And every time, ask yourself, what are you looking for? Is it possible to change the goal, what steps you would get, you should, you should do. And I think for me, everything started, as I told you, from revolution. But first, I just dream about this, I dream that I wanna change something. I, I, I even don't know exactly how it'd be, it can be, because in practice, it was totally contrasted. But I started and I am always ready to changes, I'm not closed. And I think it's a very good example, I was a candidate to local, to local, the local authority when I was twenty-three years old. I am woman, I'm girl, believe me, nobody expected that I will win, I win, I won. But I done it because I wanted it. And now, I, I, I believe, I am a big, I am real example for other young leaders, for other, for another young women, that everything is possible, just you should do. And every time you should work, not twenty-four hours, it should be twenty-eight hours. You should work hardly than others and remember that when you run, can, somebody can run, somebody run after you, behind you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Something like this, maybe I lose some questions, you can repeat I.
No, that's fine. I think those are all of the questions I had, I don't know if you had any questions for us about U.N.A., anything in the future? I'm not too sure, but I think this is a very informative.
Yeah, I have, actually, I have.
Sure.
Uh, I would like to, to suggest your organization to think about gender month in your country.
Gender month?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was in museum to, in San Diego Museum of Women. And I spoke with the head of Museum Anne Koyberg.
Yeah.
And she's amazing. And I, 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 I talked about gender month with you and I wanna speak with, I wanna talk with you about gender month and possible organization, this kind of event, but with your tradition, with your mental problems in San Diego, maybe in other local cities and to encourage there, pupils, encourage students, encourage military women, encourage, encourage police, representatives, I mean, women, business women who just have just a deal startups, who wanna pitch ideas. And I think it can be, we can, I, I know that your country have a lot of association, I mean funds. We can apply together. My organization, but it's still, it's not American, but it can be. Your organization, Museum of Women, and it can be really very creative and wise project for all countries, all states in United States, in United States of America.
What is the, you mentioned the mental health aspects of it, where does that fit in? Or what is the key thing that you want to focus on when it comes to mental state of people?
I mean, uh, mental habits, it's, uh, 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 sorry, I, I would like mental habits.
Habits, okay.
Yeah. I mean, very often we think that women couldn't do something. Women can't be a member city council and at the same time to be a mom. Women should stay at home and prepare food, I don't know, maybe in your country, nobody thinks so, but I think yes.
Okay, and so gender month, right now I'm thinking that there's, there's women's, some marches, pretty much like the month of the woman. Uh, we have the Women's March, it's Women's History Month and we highlight all things women there. Would it be a separate month, like would you wanna do it in like August, just during autumn month? Or would the ideas that you're thinking of play into, you know, everything that fits into the Women's History Month of March? And you don't have to answer that right away, that's something that we can like take offline and keep working on, but that's just something.
I, I mean that it could, I, I mean that I'm open like for conversation, because it's like new idea and we just started to speak about this, but I have actually a methodology how to do it. And I have, but I know that just without you, like because you know mental habits, you know traditions, you know what are problems exactly you have, I know then in my schools, mostly teachers are women. Most of teachers are women, in your school, no, not mostly. But even for, for our pupils, it means that they have like an example that women's just can be teacher and they spend with them around one day, come on.
Okay.
So you know exactly, that's why I encourage your team, your representative of your organization and maybe other ones' organization, just organize a round table, I mean, it can be like in this online because after one week, I will leave country.
Okay.
But if we encourage something and find ideas how we can spread out in this, how we can push this gender month in your country. Because I think we had a few creative moments and it, it can be work here. And with Anne, we can analyze information more deeply because Anne, Anne is amazing. She is a creator of tour about, I mean, guide tour in the city, but according to the women's opportunities
Yeah.
and, and goals.
Okay.
And she, actually she needs support, because I, as I know, in this museum, I, I, I thought, because I saw how much boxes they have, maybe around more than five hundred boxes they have, where all of this important stuff, but it is on boxes because they have no place. I think. It may, huh?
No place to put it or no one to distribute the things?
No place to put it in museum because it's very small.
Okay.
We, we can figure out something with this. And I know that she, I, I, but I thought she, museum really needs it. And I think community, San Diego's community needs it too.
So you think she needs more space in the museum?
Yeah, more space and maybe more comfortable place where people can take more easily. Maybe in what your famous park, Babo Park.
Yeah, well, I don't think that's my judgment call, but I would definitely.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Helen, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Hey, it's Mary and I would like to ask you a question.
Yes.
Uh, Irina, can you tell us about domestic violence in your country and, and what you think can be done about that?
Oh yeah, thank you, Mary, it's wonderful questions. In my city, eighty percent of victims of domestic violence, women's. We have no, before, we, we have no rule and law, work, I mean, practical law. Because we, we, we have like some best, best, not, not that everything should be good, but it wasn't work. And in our country, every thief's woman are single mom. So very often, it's, happens because women said that, no, no more violence, I would like to stop it. But it's not fear. And, fair, and I think this is like, this is examples, it shows that we have problems with domestic violence in our country. And we, we need improve our law in this issue. So it would be very nice if we, at the end, decide that we would do this project, I mean, gender month and me for my coun, I, for my coun, country, encourage your best practices, your best amend, amendments in the law. Titles, I don't know. And bring the, these ideas to my country, to my, to our Member of Parliament or maybe at that time, I would start, I, I, I will be a candidate with these best practices from your country. Because your country started this moving more fast, in the past. So you had more time to work in this area and you find the instrument which are working and which are not. So we need this, why we should like create a new bicycle, we wanna achieve yours, which is working.
And that includes domestic violence?
Yeah, exactly, of course, it's very important issue and we had a round table about domestic violence in our gender month.
Okay. All right.
And we said that very often, we don't know what to do, where we should call.
Yes, that's a very sensitive topic.
Yeah. Very often, women can call to police and said, oh, come in, come, come in, I have problems, I was beaten. But at the end, when, when police came, when police come.
They usually.
He said, okay, stop, stop, no, no, I don't want, just don't grab him somewhere else. And police give, give a fee to the family. And very often, this, this man, very often, they are not ready to pay because they losers, sorry.
That's fair. I think like a lot of domestic violence cases also tie into economic status of a home, right? So men always feel like they have the upper hand because they're the ones bringing in the income and then they can do whatever they want. And that also triggers into how they treat the women in their household. So it's a very layered sort of topic to dive into. So starting to think about gender equality by giving more opportunities to women so that they can be able to take care of themselves first and their children first, without having to depend on a man. I think that's one way to start that conversation. I think that's one of the most powerful ways to try and start that conversation and then everything else can come after that.
And actually about Navy issues, military stuff. A lot of people I know that from, from your country came back from the war too, like in my country, they came to the region, they come to the region. So it's a problem too. I think refugees, it's a problem too. And we are in the same case because you have a border in with Mexico. And I just yesterday saw a picture how people, how young, how children see their future and their present. It's, it's from the cage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you see the drawings of the cages, Helene?
Um, I didn't see drawings, but I've definitely been taking a look at some of the pictures and articles that have been coming out, yeah.
Yeah. Actually, I'm very, I, I want to say, say, I want to say thank you so much for you, for your questions, for your organization. I want to say thank you to Anne, I want to say thank you, Mary, because Mackenzie, she is not together, she, she is together with me now. And when I'm sitting with her, I feel more powerful. She's a very powerful, educated, professional woman who supports other young women, women's. And it's important to be connected with others, to support each other, don't hate, don't, don't.
But hate to lift each other up, I think is what you're trying to say, yeah.
That's why let's, let's, to be in connection and let's communicate, but later for, let's continue. Our conversation later, I mean, later without like some stuff after this first one. I hope it would be, it would be not, not last, first, but not last.
Yep, definitely, we'll keep it going, there's always work to do, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I wanna thank you for your time, I know you had a lot of different appointments going on, especially today. And thank you, Mary, I know you're in the background, but thank you so much for the connection to Irina.
Are we still online, are we still videoing?
Um, yes, I can turn it off and then we can speak offline.
I just, you're welcome and I, you, you did a really nice job, I thought, so. Yeah, Helene, I think you did a really nice job at interviewing Irina, so kudos.
Thank you, thank you very much. And I'm excited, hopefully everybody enjoys it when we share it with them.
Yeah, I hope.
All right, so thanks again from United Nations Association San Diego, Young Professionals, and enjoy the rest of your day.
Thanks, Helene.
Bye.
Bye.